All set.
Good afternoon. I'm now going to call the Wednesday, April thirteenth, twenty twenty-two, meeting of the Norfolk County Commissions to order. On Thursday, March twelfth, twenty twenty, Governor Charles Baker issued an order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, Mass. General Law Chapter thirty A, Section twenty. That auto was effective immediately until it is rescinded or the state of emergency is terminated. On February twelfth, twenty twenty-two, by action of legislature, that auto was continued until July fifteenth, twenty twenty-two. Thank you. I'm going to call this meeting to order and ask everyone to rise up here and join me in saluting at the flag. Alright.
Let's lead to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice-
Thank you. I'm going to call the roll. Commissioner Stady.
I am present, sir.
Commissioner Collins, present, and Commissioner Shea is present. We have a full board here today.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I grant permission for the use of my signature for any documents as needed.
Thank you. There are a few here, not voluminous today, but we have a few. Number three minutes of the open meeting held on March thirtieth, twenty thirty-three for approval. We held them last week to make a correction, as approved.
Motion.
As corrected.
Second.
All in favor of approving the minutes of March thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, as corrected?
Twenty twenty-two.
Twenty twenty-two. All in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote. Next, minutes of the open session meeting held last week, April sixth, twenty twenty-two, for your approval.
Move approval?
Second.
Thank you.
The attitude had been interested in being made.
Right.
Very good.
Okay, the minutes of the open meeting on April sixth, twenty twenty-two, for approval, all in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote. Thank you. Number six is the public comment sector. Director Cronin, any comments on the public's side?
I am not aware of any, but I observed there's an individual on the call who, I believe, has his hand raised and is interested.
Okay, is there anyone, someone on the call wants to speak?
Yes, I do, yeah.
John Cass from Braintree.
Welcome, sir. What's the matter? Speak right up, anything you'd like. Well.
Oh, thank you so much. I appreciate it. Thank you to the commissioners and everyone else in the meeting. I'm John Cass. I am resident here in Braintree, and at the last Braintree School Committee meeting, Mayor Corus was asked a series of questions about the ARPA funds, and he suggested that the problem was the county because you did very well in managing your funds and so therefore made money, and it's under the provisions, I believe, of the ARPA funds that they can't disburse any funds. I was wondering if it was possible if you could, if the county could give your, and I'm not asking for sort of details now, but maybe a written response to the mayor's comments about that so that we can share that with the residents. In the school committee meeting, there was a vote for the school budget, and it didn't, it got shot down by three to three. And so those questions about ARPA funds are really pertinent to some of the issues that are happening in the town around the school budget. And so the residents of Braintree, I think, would be very interested to get the commissioner's take on exactly what happened so that we have full clarity on what's happening, whereas at this moment, at the moment in time, we're only hearing one side, as it were. So it'd be really helpful if you could give, you know, a written response that we could provide to folks.
I'm going to refer this to County Director John Cronin. However, I will say that we've spent some time on this, and this is not I don't want to use the word new to us, but this, we've been wrangling with this issue, and it's got to do with federal regulations. However, I'm going to ask John Cronin to answer it, and then we will answer something in writing based on your inquiry today, John, and I appreciate it.
Oh, thank you so much.
Good afternoon, Mr. Cass. Commissioner Shea's act is correct. The matter is known to the county. Briefly, you may be familiar with the American Rescue Plan Act. It was a very large federal grant made available across the country for communities, states, and organizations to cope with the effects of the pandemic. Norfolk County was provided one hundred and thirty-seven million dollars for its twenty-eight cities and towns. Last year, the commissioners voted to disburse the funds through a grant program based on a per capita formula from two thousand nineteen population. If you go to our website, you'll be able to find the amount allocated to the town of Braintree. During the last, between July of twenty twenty-one and January of twenty twenty-two, the county began to create a ARPA grant program. We created a portal with the assistance of some consultants and informed communities on how they can apply for one of the six purpose areas of the grant. In February, the United States Treasury issued what's called the final rule for all recipients to be guided by and adhere to for use of the funds. One of those rules, clarifications, involved the category known as revenue loss. So briefly, during the pandemic, many communities experienced a tremendous drop in revenues associated with hospitality, entertainment, or licensed organizations that could not draw people because of the pandemic. And the revenue loss component was intended to allow the communities to recoup that loss. The final rule came out, and they offered the opportunity for the recipient, which is the county, to utilize what's called a revenue loss based on a one, a total ten million dollar benefit. Ten million does not provide enough revenue loss benefit for all of the twenty-eight cities and towns in Norfolk County that desired access to that category, John. And so subsequently, we informed the communities, including Braintree, I believe it was in mid-February, that we were going to use the same approach of population-based distribution to let each community know out of the ten million how much you can expect to receive of this benefit. Okay, stop me if I'm getting a little too oblique. I'm trying to be brief. It is safe to say that the town of Braintree is not alone. We had several communities in Norfolk County that were quite upset with this, this clarification by the federal government. Braintree, the mayor contacted us. He was very vocal, very clear on his disappointment about this development. He was very angry because one of the problems in this, in this paradigm is we're functioning county. We're here to service the needs of the twenty-eight cities and towns, but in Massachusetts, you may be aware, there are many other counties that are no longer functional. In those counties, the money went directly to the cities and towns. So the mayor felt that because we were part of a county system, if not but for that, his benefit would have gone directly to him. He's not wrong, but we can't un-invent the fact that we're a county. We're following the rules that are given to us by the United States Treasury. Sympathizing with the town of Braintree and the plight they were under because they intended to use virtually their entire ARPA award, John, under revenue loss, and now they were looking at a fraction of that, the substantial difference between what they were planning for and what they actually qualify for. And the mayor explained to me, this is going to impact our FY twenty-three budget. So feeling the urgency from Braintree and several other communities, we contacted through our congressional delegation, the United States Treasury, to explain to them this unintended consequence that communities within functional counties in Massachusetts are experiencing. About two weeks ago, we made our case to the United States Treasury, which much thanks to Senator Warren, Senator Markey, Congressman Lynch, and Congressman Archon Claus's office. They heard our appeal. We haven't heard back from them. They were very blunt with us and said, "We can't change the law, but we will try to help you understand ways to optimize your grants to the community's benefits." We stand ready to listen and hear more on the development of this, but in some respects, I guess I just need to convey to you, the county's hands are tied. We are beholden to the law that Congress passed for this ARPA grant. We're sympathetic to some of the communities, including Braintree, and the problems this has created for their planning, but we're trying to be fair and equitable to each of the twenty-eight cities and towns in Norfolk County. So I'll stop there because it's a big story, and I don't want to go on and on, but I hope that brings some clarity to the predicament we find ourselves in. Sympathetic, of course, to our communities that are struggling, but there's not much more we can do without further guidance from the Treasury.
I appreciate the overview of what happened, and I will also follow up with those links so that I can provide it to the citizens of Braintree for a wider discussion. Thank you so much. I really appreciate it.
My pleasure.
Thank you, John. Nice to see you. Do we have any other public comment today?
No, sir.
Okay, we're going to move on to number six. Appointments, we have none. Number seven, all business, I have none. Number eight, payroll matters for consideration?
No personnel matters.
No personnel matters at all. That's good. Number nine, payroll and expense warrant for approval.
Dick, I have them. I don't know if you have it.
Commissioner Collins.
I'll defer to you, Peter. Go ahead, please.
Okay, so I'll make a move, I'll make a motion to move warrant twenty-two dash forty-one payroll county in the amount of one hundred and thirty-three thousand, nine hundred and twenty-four dollars and eleven cents.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote. Next.
I'll make a motion to move the warrant for the four-two-twenty-two expense of the county in the amount of eighty-four thousand, one hundred and twenty-six dollars and twenty-five cents.
Second.
Motion made in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it is approved. Only two today?
That's it.
Okay. Number ten. We have ARPA warrants for approval. ARPA warrants.
Commissioner Shea, at this time, and commissioners, at this time, we have no ARPA warrants for approval this week. There may be some next week. We have some activity with several communities, but nothing to report this week.
Okay, if no one has an objection, I'm going to go by number eleven because it's a one-thirty bit opening, and I'll go to number twelve. Contractor was, we have none. Number thirteen, fiscal year budget development. Director Cronin.
Thank you, Commissioner Shea. Just a reminder, after presenting the FY twenty-three proposed budget to the Finance Committee last week and through you, I plan to do the same this evening with the Norfolk County Advisory Board as they open their public hearing on this process at the Agricultural School. The budget development is entering its final phases, as you know, with the hope that by May eleventh, just a little under a month from now, we will have an approved FY twenty-three budget. But at this point, we have a balanced budget to propose. We'll solicit feedback from the advisory board, make any changes recommended therein. Thank you, sir.
Number fourteen, report on the American Rescue Plan Act of twenty twenty-one.
No real update, Commissioner Shea. The grant, as I mentioned last week, is going on quite well. We continue to see an increase in activity in grant applications. We're also entering a period of time where the federal government is requiring reporting on these grants. We've sent out notices through our Clifton Larson partner for communities to share information on the update of activities associated with grant awards to date. So there's a lot of administrative work going on behind the scenes. Program is going along quite well and pretty happy with things to date. No other updates, sir.
Okay, we're going to keep moving then. Fifteen, report of the county director.
Thank you, Commissioner. Just a few items. I noticed that the county's collective bargaining negotiations with the three ASME units will continue next Tuesday, April nineteenth. I think we set aside at least two, maybe three hours to receive requests or asks from the unions. I believe we scheduled follow-up meetings for May and June as well to attend to those negotiations. A reminder to department heads and policymakers within Norfolk County, the State Ethics Commission has sent out emails to individuals who are required under the statute to file their statement of financial interest by May second, twenty twenty-two. If anyone has any questions or if they failed to receive the email on how to complete this form, it's all electronic, please contact Michelle Labadini. I have very good news to report from a technology perspective. Want to, want to give a big thanks to Mark McDonald. Over the last six to eight months, we've worked hard to convert the county's technology systems to a more secure and vibrant environment, excuse me. One of the things, and this is also an Abraham's Group report recommendation, is to convert this, the county's information technology that's held in, the Infinite Visions software to the cloud. What this practically means is that we're moving from a hardware-based server slash software storage system to a cloud-based solution, also known as software as a solution or a subscription. This move took a little bit of work by Mark McDonald and our vendor, but we achieved it this past weekend. We do not have any reported problems of users experiencing any change in the way the server, excuse me, the software is performing. We are, we're expecting to move our Microsoft product next week as well. So within the next week or so, virtually all of our server work will be in the cloud, which is a tremendous progress for the security and performance of our systems going forward. Commissioners, I'd like to draw your attention on another matter to a proposal that I received this morning from DCAM. As you know, you folks have approved a supplemental item to fund an appraisal of the Quincy District Court. I was planning to contact my partners at DCAM once the appraisal funding was approved to let them know a rough timeframe for us to engage them. As you know, we'll be beholden to Chapter thirty B on the disposition of the property. I intend to bring attorney Scott Lopez in on this dialogue. However, our friends at DCAM have provided a draft proposed timeline. I'll give the commissioners in in person a copy of this. Dick, forgive me, I just got this, so I didn't get a copy to. I forgive Commissioner Stady, and I'll make sure you get a copy. But briefly, it's aggressive. DCAM is performing an appraisal of their own, presumably, that is due May sixth. As you probably know, the environmental assessments, phase one and phase two of Quincy District Court have already been completed. I believe I've updated the board on that previously. They are doing a survey and a title search this month and following Mass. General Law seven C, which is DCAM's statute for acquiring public property. So I'll, I'll speak with Heidi Green following this evening's meeting and the approval of funding for our appraisal so that we can move ahead with our plan somewhat in sync with what the state is doing, although I think theirs is a bit more aggressive than ours will be. So that by the time our appraisal, appraisers are done, we'll have some empirical evidence to discuss and negotiate on. So as I see this, it's trending into more of a summertime exercise to work out the details associated with the transfer of Quincy District Court. I'll pause there. I have a couple more updates unless there's any questions from the commissioners regarding.
Why don't you keep going? We'll get ten more minutes before we.
Okay, sounds good. Commissioners, I received a notice last Thursday from Rabbi Mendy Krensky. She is, I believe, a spiritual slash Jewish rabbi out of Nida, Massachusetts. She's requesting that commissioners engage and endorse, as of yesterday, April twelve, the National Education and Sharing Day in the United States of America. This would join the President and Congress in this national event, according to Rabbi Krensky, that since nineteen seventy-eight has been recognition of the monumental achievements of Rabbi Menachem Schneerson for the betterment of education for all Americans as a day to raise awareness and strengthen the education of our children. If the commissioners are interested, I'd be happy to read the proclamation, and if you choose to take a vote on this, it would probably mean a lot to the rabbi. On the other hand, if you want to take another advisement, simply because it actually happened yesterday, I'll yield. What is your pleasure, Mr. Chairman?
You want to hear it?
If you'll let me to read the proclamation.
Read the proclamation and we'll.
Okay. Whereas equality education is one of the significant foundations for the continuing success of our state, our country, and our society at large, and in Norfolk County, we strive for the betterment of all our citizens through an increased focus on education and sharing. And whereas through providing the possibility of an excellent education for all, especially children, with which to gain knowledge through rigorous study, we can create hope for a brighter, kinder, and more united and prosperous future in the lives of so many. And whereas the educational system must also focus on building character by emphasizing the cultivation of universal moral and ethical values that have been the bedrock of society from the dawn of civilization, including the values known as the Seven Noah Hyde Laws. And whereas one of the leading global advocates for the advancement of education, the Lubvitcher, Rebbe, Rabbi, Menachem Schneerson, of righteous memory, stressed the importance of moral and ethical education as the bedrock of humanity and the hallmark of a healthy society, and strongly urged that the education be reinforced by the inculcation of strong moral values. And whereas in recognition of the Rebbe's outstanding lasting contributions towards improvements in world education, morality, and acts of charity, he was awarded the Congressional Medal Gold, excuse me, the Congressional Gold Medal, and the United States Congress has established his birthdate as a national day to raise awareness and strengthen the education of our children. And whereas April twelfth, twenty twenty-two, will mark one hundred and twenty years since the Rebbe's birth, and the date will be celebrated across the United States and around the globe in tribute to his vision, guidance, and leadership. And whereas for more than forty years, the President of the United States has recognized and honored the Rebbe's vision each year on that day proclaiming it Education and Sharing Day in the United States of America. And whereas we presently battle a global pandemic which has disrupted traditional models of education across our nation while concurrently motivating focus on the stronger core values we wish to impart to children and adults beyond academic achievement. And whereas we can nurture the unity of diverse peoples through encouraging increased acts of goodness, kindness, imbued with awareness that even a single positive act of an individual can make a major impact in this world. And now therefore, we, the County Commissioners of Norfolk County, do hereby proclaim Tuesday, April twelfth, twenty twenty-two, to be Education and Sharing Day in the Norfolk County, and call upon government officials, educators, volunteers, and citizens to reach out to those within your community and work to create a better, brighter, and more hopeful future for all.
Commissioners, can you comment? We've almost accepted it by you reading it, which is a good thing.
Sounds good.
Okay.
So the question is, do you want to take it under advisement, or would you like to take a vote to endorse the proclamation?
Why don't we endorse the vote? I'd like to take a vote to endorse the proclamation and move on, and then next year, hopefully, we'll bring it up a week earlier. That's all.
I didn't get this until last Thursday.
Dick, you were the teacher. You want to make the motion?
I'd be very honored and pleased to make the motion of that proclamation as read by our director. Thank you, sir.
Second.
Motion made in second. All in favor?
Aye.
It is a.
Thank you.
Endorse. Thank you very much.
Just two more quick items. Reminder, all employees, retirees, the Mayflower Municipal Health Group Health and Wellness Fair for Open Enrollment is Wednesday, April twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-two, from twelve to four P M. You must register ahead of time. You must register ahead of time to participate in this open enrollment online. It's a virtual benefits event. Any questions, please call our Human Resources Director, Michelle Labadini. And our commissioners, under the very last bullet, just putting a bookmark here, Joe, I'd like to discuss a revision to the supplemental that you approved last week. There's an update I need to provide to you.
Do you want to do that now?
I believe it's more fitting under the bullet, items not anticipated due to circumstances.
Okay, we're going to move back to number eleven if we have no objections. It's timely now. We have a bid opening today for the unleaded gasoline, mid-grade unleaded gasoline, diesel fuel, number two fuel oil for the South Shore Purchasing Group for a period of one year commencing September first, twenty twenty-two, with an option for a second year and a third year ending August twenty-first, twenty twenty-five. So we're going to invite the Director of Procurement, Nancy Rockwell. Here's Nancy. Good afternoon, Nancy. We're just opening this one-thirty bit up. Are we ready to go today?
Yes.
Okay. Come on in, folks. It's not going to take long.
Yeah, I just think you just read the whole thing.
Go ahead, I did.
Okay, so first I have bid from Dennis K. Burke. So they have bid for a fixed adder over the Opus Wholesale Low Rack for year one, for unleaded gas, point four-nine-six-two, mid-grade unleaded, point one-nine-six-two, ultra-low sulfur diesel, point one-five-one-four-two, number two fuel oil, point three-four-five-two, year two, point five-zero-six-two, for unleaded gasoline, mid-grade unleaded, point five-zero-six-two, ultra-low sulfur diesel, point five-two-four-two, and number two fuel oil, point three-five-five-two. Year three, unleaded gasoline, point five-one-six-two, mid-grade unleaded gas, point five-one-six-two, ultra-low sulfur diesel, point five-three-four-two, number two fuel oil, point three-six-six-two. Fixed adder over NYMEX year one, unleaded gasoline, point five-four-six-two, mid-grade unleaded gas, point five-nine-four-two, ultra-low sulfur diesel, point five-six-four-two, number two fuel oil, point four-two-five-two. Year two, unleaded gas, point five-five-six-two, year two, mid-grade unleaded gas, point five-nine-four-two, sorry, point six-zero-four-two, ultra-low sulfur diesel, point five-seven-four-two, number two fuel oil, point four-three-five-two. Then fixed adder over NYMEX, third year, unleaded gasoline, point five-six-six-two, mid-grade unleaded gas, point six-one-four-two, ultra-low sulfur diesel, point five-eight-four-two, number two fuel oil, point four-four-five-two. Devaney Energy. And they have bid for year one for Opus Wholesale Low Rack, ultra-low sulfur diesel, point five-nine-five-oh, number two fuel oil, point three-one-seven-zero, year two, Opus Low Rack, fixed adder, ultra-low sulfur diesel, point six-zero-five-zero, number two fuel, point three-two-seven-zero. Year three, fixed adder over Opus, ultra-low sulfur diesel, point six-one-five-zero, number two fuel oil, point three-four-seven-zero. Fixed adder over NYMEX, year one, ultra-low sulfur diesel, point seven-three-five-zero, number two fuel, point four-nine-five-zero. Fixed adder over NYMEX, year two, point seven-six-five-zero for ultra-low sulfur diesel, number two fuel oil, point five-two-five-zero. Fixed adder over NYMEX, year three, ultra-low sulfur diesel, point seven-eight-five-oh, number two fuel oil, point five-four-five-zero. Happy Global Petroleum. The fixed adder over Opus Wholesale Low Rack, year one, unleaded gas, point four-two-three-five, mid-grade unleaded, point four-eight-one-one, ultra-low sulfur diesel, point four-five-three-two, number two fuel oil, point three-six-eight-three. Fixed adder over Opus, year two, unleaded gas, point four-three-three-five, mid-grade unleaded, point four-nine-one-one, ultra-low sulfur diesel, point four-six-three-two, number two fuel, point three-seven-eight-three. Fixed adder over Opus, third year, unleaded gas, point four-four-three-five, mid-grade unleaded, point five-zero-one-one, ultra-low sulfur diesel, point four-seven-three-two, number two fuel oil, point three-eight-eight-three. Fixed adder over NYMEX, year one, unleaded gas, point four-nine-five-seven, mid-grade unleaded, point six-five-five-five, ultra-low sulfur diesel, point five-six-two-three, number two fuel, point four-zero-six-one. Fixed adder over NYMEX, second year, unleaded gas, point five-zero-five-seven, mid-grade unleaded gas, point six-six-five-five, ultra-low sulfur diesel, point five-seven-two-three, number two fuel oil, point four-one-six-one. Fixed adder over NYMEX, third year, point five-one-five-seven for unleaded gas, mid-grade unleaded, point six-seven-five-five, ultra-low sulfur diesel, point five-eight-two-three, and number two fuel oil, point four-two-six-one. And that will be all.
Okay. Commissioners, we have a motion to take this under consideration, and hold on to these things because it's proper time to take it under consideration. Next week, one week. Okay, we have our three bids. We'll take a motion that can take it under consideration. We're going to hope that we'll award next week.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Commissioner Stady.
I will let the bids open this afternoon pursuant to the reading by our chief purchasing officer be tabled for until next week for further study. for until next week for further study.
Second.
Motion made in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It is a vote. Hopefully we can dispose of this next week. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Nancy.
All right, moving right along.
Thank you, guys.
Number 16, emergency items topics that the chair would not reasonably anticipate would be discussed. I know Director Cronin has one.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Late last week, following our meeting, I received invoices associated with legal work that's being done about the county. As a result of the invoice we received, I have to revise the request that I previously made to you for supplementing our legal costs for FY22. As you may recall, I had requested $20,000 primarily to help with the Quincy District Court disposition. I'm asking today to revisit that vote and revise the number from 20 to $40,000 to cover our legal obligations through the end of fiscal year. This will total the amount we're spending up to now 437,237, 437,237 dollars for FY22 third supplemental. So this slight but necessary and unexpected increase in legal obligations is forcing me to ask you to reconsider your supplemental vote from last week. And if so, I will submit the revised operating budget for signature this afternoon.
So this necessitates a reconsideration of the supplemental appropriation vote we took last week.
Correct.
And this, this order in our package reflects the changes, correct?
That is correct.
Stated for 12, 2022. And you have a backup here. We have a letter from local council.
That's correct.
Scott Lopez.
That's correct.
And some backup material. Okay, commissioners, any questions about reconsideration for our supplemental authorization for tonight's Advisory Board meeting?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Stady.
Without any disrespect at all towards our very learned counsel, in fact, this bill, I think, is very reasonable given the amount of work that he is doing. He quantified it and broke it down completely in a very professional way. It still is alarming to me as a, as a member of this board to see the amount of money we're spending on legal expenses. I think we're all acutely aware of it. I think it behooves us perhaps to look at where the money is being spent very carefully and perhaps assess some strategies with council in terms of how we can kind of contain costs a little bit moving forward. I did ask, and of course, I'll ask this through you, the chairman, of course, Chairman Shea, that our director please break the bill, for me at least, into three areas. One is the ongoing lawsuit with the registry of deeds. So I have a better idea of what we're spending on that. The second, I asked Director Cronin, and again, through your permission, Mr. Chairman, to break out the costs involved with our ongoing lawsuit with the solar in Walpole. And then the third can be kind of clumped in. It looked like many of the other miscellaneous bills were conversations that are necessary with Patrick, our engineer, and other kind of things that obviously seem very appropriate. Again, this is nothing towards the quality of the work we're getting from Attorney Lopez. It's outstanding. I'm very completely satisfied with it, but I'm just concerned, I think we all are, that this bill is higher than we thought. And, you know, these suits are still going forward and I don't know how much longer it's going to keep going. So I think we need to kind of look at this and perhaps schedule an executive session in early May if possible to kind of come up with some strategies to that end. I thank you, sir.
Director Cronin.
Commissioner Stady, no problem at all giving you those figures. Happy to do so. I just wanted to inform the commissioners that we've augmented the FY22 legal budget with this approval twice. The first was back in December because it appeared the legal budget did not include sufficient funds for upcoming collective bargaining through Michelle McNulty's firm, Commissioner Stady. And then this particular one was initially 20,000 for the unanticipated cost of using legal services associated with the appraisal of the Quincy District Court. So those two costs, which I believe total $60,000 in FY22 expenses, were not part of the first or second prong of the three pieces you're referring to. But we most certainly can give you a very close estimate of cost for FY22 for the ongoing lawsuit associated with the registers sued against the commissioners on the chief information officer matter and on the solar defense of the solar project over at Walpole. I'll be happy to do that. I'll probably see you later on this evening. I'll give you those numbers, okay?
Sounds great. I appreciate it. Thank you.
My pleasure.
Do you still want a motion right now, John?
Yes, I will need a motion because then I'll take this to the Finance Committee this afternoon for their approval, reapproval, and then bring to the Advisory Board this evening.
Dick, do you want to make the motion?
Go ahead, Peter. You could do it, sir. I'll second.
I'll move that. Thank you. I move that we, so we're moving 20,000 into 20,000 more to bring up the total of 40, right?
That's correct.
Okay. I move that we appropriate an additional $20,000 for legal costs. So the total appropriation will be 40,000, not 20,000.
We need to revote, Peter. I'm sorry. The third supplemental then revised that?
Believe do.
You may.
When you add that in, it's just the a friendly amendment would be to make the new total 262,503?
That's correct.
Oh, right, for the operating side. Correct.
Right. Yeah, okay. So thank you, Dick. We'll add that to my motion. So do you want to second the motion?
I'll second it. Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay. Do we need any further discussion? We're going to take a vote and then we're going to expect fully that you'll supply Commissioner Stady with all the background.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Is Director Cronin going to be attending the Finance Committee, explaining this before the Advisory Board meeting?
Yes.
Is that your plan? Okay, good. All right. Thank you, sir. Excellent.
Okay, only supplement third, I said, two. Third, fiscal year third supplemental appropriation operating budget, a $20,000 increase on the legal costs, including Quincy District Court disposition. Motion made in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Vision in us. Three to zero. Thank you. Next.
That's it? Is that it?
Well, I have one more.
Okay, sorry.
With, with, with crossed fingers, I'm going to bring to your attention the Norfolk County Advisory Board Finance Committee in full meeting. We have, it's posted for next week, correct? That's the 13th of April. That's today, I'm sorry. Four o'clock today and then the, the draft, the, the open hearing at, again, at the agricultural school at 6:00 p.m. Okay. All right.
But we, that's a posted meeting since there'll be more than one commissioner present, correct? We're covered on the open meeting law?
Yeah, so, so at the four o'clock meeting, Dick, I don't think it's, it's, it's us. It's only, it's only one county commissioner can go.
No, I will not be. No, no.
The six o'clock.
Yeah, but for the four o'clock, more than one commissioner can go, but only one commissioner can talk.
Got it. Okay. Okay. I was not intending to make the four o'clock on this one, but I will be in attendance at six. I want to make sure I'm properly covered.
Absolutely.
Right, we're, yeah, that's all.
All right, this, this comes, we're coming from the six and I'll be at the four.
Excellent. Thank you.
On the agenda, back to the main part of the agenda. Number 16, emergency items, a topic that the chair did not reasonably anticipate would be discussed. That was the only item, that was the additional 20,000 in the supplemental appropriation. Okay, do we have anything else? I have nothing else. I'll take a motion to adjourn. Thank you very much.
Motion to adjourn. Okay, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
This meeting is adjourned at 1:43. Thank you very much.
I'll see you guys tonight. Thank you, guys.